All right, so if everybody's ready.
No.
I'd like to call our Board of Ed meeting to order. Do we have any public audience tonight, Katie? Did we have any emails or anything? No? Okay, so no public audience tonight. And we'll do committee reports and communications. So we'll start with you, Kathy. Not Kathy. I'm sorry, it's all the masking and everything else. I apologize. Sharon, can she just use your mic for her report?
Yeah.
There we go.
No problem.
Squadron Line had a successful Super Bowl drive organized by the Take Action Club, collecting five trunkloads of non-perishable items that were donated to the Simsbury Food Bank. Christina Garrity's 4th grade class collected socks, mittens, and hats to support the Hartford Police. The items will be given to individuals who are homeless in Hartford. The S Q L faculty engaged in a powerful professional development session with Deacon Art Miller about equity. He used the frontline footage of a class divided to facilitate a discussion regarding discrimination, how quickly it can be ingrained in our thought and actions, as well as the power of our words as educators and the impact they have on our students. Central School celebrated the character theme of caring. Kindergarten and 1st grade students supported these efforts through inspiring messages during morning announcements and a whole-school caring bulletin board. On Friday, the 26th, they will have a virtual Central School Sales Assembly to celebrate their character education program initiatives. The assembly will be shared in classrooms, and teachers are excited to recognize all children for their efforts. Central's Equity Committee planned a school-wide study for Black History Month. In recognition of this, each class will study the accomplishments and contributions of an important Black American. By the end of February, each class will have created a slide about the person they have chosen, and these presentations will be shared across the building. Students will not only get to appreciate the abundance of achievements of Black Americans, past and present, but also have the important opportunities to teach and learn from each other. Terrifil School has started classroom presentations about their Black History Month Book Museum. Each morning, a grade-level classroom presents to the entire school a 5-minute summary of their book they have chosen to read. So far, they have heard about Louis Armstrong, May Jemison, Lonnie Johnson, Lungari Maythai, James Lafayette, and Garrett Morgan. They have also kept their relationship with Westminster School as they continue their grit-and-grace mentorship program virtually with some of their students. During the month of February, each class at Tooton Hills has been studying the accomplishments and contributions of important Black Americans. Students are working collaboratively to create slides to present and share with the program-wide community in what they call a "Book Museum." By the end of this week, presentations will be shared in cross-grade-level groups. Students will not only get to appreciate the abundance of achievements of Black Americans, but also have important opportunities to teach and learn from each other across various modes and platforms. H J M S students and staff are celebrating achievements and contributions of African-Americans in many ways. Each morning, an announcement is made highlighting an African-American who has made a significant contribution to history or culture. Display cases in hallways are decorated with posters of influential African-Americans. Reverend Dr. Alvin Johnson will be speaking to students in a virtual presentation this week about the significance of Black History Month. And staff are wearing bracelets with the words "Honoring the Past, Celebrating the Present, and Inspiring the Future." These bracelets will also be given as prizes to students participating in a trivia contest. In the week preceding Valentine's Day, the Counseling Office sponsored a "Valentine's Day" event in which students and staff could send virtual Valentine messages to each other. Students are in the process of enhancing bathroom decor. Bathrooms are designated for specific teams, and students have chosen quotes to decorate the walls of their team bathrooms. With the help of their library and media specialist, an advisor, and quick-cut machine, students have printed out quotes and decorated the bathroom walls. This week is also a Student Council-sponsored Spirit Week. Each day, students may show their H J M S spirit by dressing in a chosen outfit for the day, which includes Crazy Hair Day, Movie Character Day, Dress All-in-One Color, Decades Day, and Sports Day. Two students have formed a club called Hearts for Music at the high school, with the goal to raise $1,000 for two music programs in Hartford. They have currently raised $870. Sports are up and running again. S H S has been selected as a 2019-2020 Michael's Cup recipient for making sportsmanship a priority in our district. The S H S Equity Council celebrated Black History Month with several events and learning opportunities, as well as announcements on a daily basis. Some events are two spoken-word poetry workshops, virtual film screening of the film Hidden Figures, and they're wrapping up with a special virtual celebration with a guest speaker, spoken-word performances by S H S students, and a performance from the Gospel Choir. S H S is moving to a four-day-a-week track starting March 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Sharon. We appreciate the assist. And do you have anything you want to share with us tonight?
First, I'd like to acknowledge it was really good this year to pay attention to the variety for Black History Month that was done, and even what was just shared. But then, I also, and not to, I'm sure all the schools did well, and I want to commend all the schools. But then, I also felt like a little kid myself as I tuned in in the morning for Latimer Lane, for the reading every morning. And that was really good. And so, I think as a Black American myself, there was so much that even I learned, and even throughout the state. I mean, if you haven't noticed, there's so many Black Americans, even in the state of Connecticut, that some of our legislators have been highlighting, that many of us don't even know. And so, when we talk about Black history, sometimes it's not even national, that we can look right in our own backyards, and there are Black folks right in the state of Connecticut that have done some phenomenal things in our own cities and towns. So to all of our educators, I'm just saying that sometimes we don't have to look that far, and we can just highlight our own folks that are right here in our own cities and towns. And that's a way to help our students and our children to even be able to know something about our neighbors. So I commend our educators, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Nothing tonight.
Jen?
All I have to say is I went to my first sustainability committee, and I have a ton to learn. It is incredible what they're doing, and I'm excited to enact it.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Jen.
Todd?
Hi, I did go to the Equity Council meeting last week on Thursday with Sharon. And we Zoomed, unfortunately, but we got to break down into smaller groups, and I think we got a lot of work done. There's a lot of discussion and a lot of momentum to make change and to do it in a very thoughtful manner, so it's really nice to have this dynamic group of people on the Equity Council that I'm motivated by every time I'm able to work with them. So I don't know if Sharon had more to add to that.
Yes.
But it was an excellent meeting, and I appreciate Sue ran it, and it was very helpful.
Mr. Tyndall?
Just wanted to take a second and... Just wanted to take a second and thank the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen members that came. Last week, we did a series of tours at Latimer to walk them through, and so they could see up close and personal the issues that we've been grappling with for quite some time. Really, Neil and Mike Lizetti are the ones who led the tours, did just a phenomenal job. And again, just appreciate the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance members. I thought we had a really great dialogue, and I think it was very helpful for everybody.
Yeah, I was lucky enough to go on one of those tours as well, and was very happy with everyone who came out. And it was extra time, and appreciate that they took the time to be informed about what we've been discussing. Mr. Smith? I was going to say, should we stop and... Commercial? Close enough.
How's that better?
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Sullivan?
No, I actually have nothing for tonight.
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Lundy?
So, three things. First of all, some very positive news around vaccinations for educators. So we're thrilled about that news, and we continue to work in conjunction with the Farmington Valley Health Department and our neighboring districts in the Farmington Valley to develop some clinics at the local level that educators can access. So we'll have more information about that later in the week, so that's great news. Our data is also looking very good, specifically this week, so the data trends continue to be very favorable in Simsbury and across the Farmington Valley, so wanted to share that as well. Our next P D will be a full-day professional development day on Friday, March 19th. So we are excited about those opportunities and professional development that will be centered around the four principles of our reopening plan, engaging instruction specifically relative to technology for our educators, social-emotional learning, equity and access at the building level, as well as some opportunities relative to safety and security. So that will be time well spent, with some self-directed time for teachers to work on their passion projects in the afternoon, which is always well-received. And then finally, next week, we welcome back our juniors and seniors to Simsbury High School for those who want to avail themselves for full-in-person learning. So some exciting things on the horizon for the district.
Shannon, I just wanted to ask you, what are the kids thinking about that?
Most of you are actually really excited, and even the teachers are very excited to get everyone back in class.
You'll have to update us after you've gotten back and let us know how it's going. Thanks. All right, so with that, we are on to recommended actions. So a motion on the approval of the minutes from our February 6 budget workshop?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And just, since we are all masked, just raise your hand, just so that we can all see. Thank you very much. Okay. Motion carries. Approval of minutes for February 9th meeting. I'll get a motion for that, please.
Our motion, Sharon, our motion that we accept the minutes for February 9th.
A second.
Is there any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries as well. We are on to adoption of the non-public schools budget.
So terrific for the presentation this evening, and for the motion will be our Director of Finance, Amy Merryweather. Amy?
Okay, so on the non-public school budget, there is nothing that has changed since the last time that Matt made his presentation. It's still at $564,650. However, on the public budget, we did have some positive news to present to you. If you saw your email this morning, Matthew already found a way to steal my thunder and already told you. For those of you who have not read your email, our benefits advisor was able to give us some positive news on the insurance rate, which decreased our health insurance line item by over $300,000. We were also notified of an additional retirement, which translates to an additional savings of $25,000. And then also, if you recall during the budget presentation, we let you know that we'd be receiving additional COVID funding of about $430,000 from the EXER grant. We're anticipating using a portion of this on the intervention, which will be covered in Sue's presentation tonight, and then another $165,000 on technology replacements. So with all of this, our new budget total is $73,843,930, or an increase of $1,534,869, and this translates to a 2.12 budget increase. The motion that you have in your packet, when I gave Katie the number, I didn't realize that you approved the public and the non-public separately, so unfortunately, that number has both budgets in it, so the one that I read to you is the one that you'll be approving this evening.
Okay. So first, I need a motion on the non-public schools budget, please.
I'll make a...
Oh. This one. Oh, there we go. All right, so those are the highlighted changes that you just discussed, yes?
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 non-public school budget in the amount of $564,650, which represents an increase of $12,680, or 2.4%.
A second, please.
One second.
All those in, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. And now for the public school budget. We did have a really good conversation about this at our last meeting, so I don't want the public to think we're not actually giving it its due weight.
And our workshop that we did.
And our workshop, and we, yes. So I don't want anyone to feel that we haven't vetted this budget and been through it. I just want to caveat that before we make the motion, that this is something we've all been through for a while now and are very grateful for the good news Amy brought us. So...
We also haven't heard from the public, because we didn't get any, from last meeting, we didn't get any public...
There was no public comment on Matt's presentation around the budget. Right, correct. We've not heard. So that's a good note as well. With that...
Okay, I'll make that motion. I will move that the Board of Education adopt the 2021-22 public school budget in the amount of $73,843,930, which represents an increase of $1,534,869, or 2.12%.
Can I get a second on that, please?
A second.
And is there any further discussion around the budget?
I think it's responsible, I think it's thoughtful, I think it's working towards the students, and I think our monies are, towards all, all the monies in here are working towards individuals connecting to the students in their welfare and their education. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work we did to get to that point.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Agree. I mean, tonight, as you said, was just the motion, but a lot of work went into this by a lot of people and very well thought out.
Right, agreed. All right, so then, all those in favor of the new budget numbers? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous passing of the budget. Thank you all for all the work we know that went into this. We appreciate it, and I just want to thank the board members for spending Saturdays and working on this with all of us. I think, to echo Tara, it's a responsible budget, we're moving forward, and I appreciate all the hard work. And with that, here's a fun one, cancellation of the March 9th meeting. Don't get too excited, because we have Board of Finance. So I need a motion to cancel our meeting so that we might attend the Board of Finance meeting.
Move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on March 9th, 2021.
And a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Will that be virtual on Zoom, or will it be, what are they doing for that one?
It'll be Zoom.
It'll be a Zoom meeting?
It'll be Zoom.
Okay.
I wanted to say discussion and say, is it, what time is it?
They usually do 5:45.
Okay.
But hopefully, we'll get an agenda, and we can see where we fall, because the Board of Selectmen needs to present, as well as the Board of Ed, so that might give those who are at work some grace. Pardon?
Yeah, this is just your meeting.
We're presenting by ourselves. Gotcha. So 5:45?
Yeah, okay.
So we're back to, back to...
Okay. All right. And now, we're on to information and reports, and we get to hear about Squadron Line.
Oh, it's so great to be in the schools, and, yeah, just lovely to be here at Squadron. And tonight, Principal Meg Evans and Assistant Principal Jaclyn Petrella have a presentation for you, and this is just an opportunity, when we have our Board of Ed meetings here in the schools, to highlight some great work that's happening, and to make that come alive with different voices and faces. So again, tonight, Meg and Jaclyn to present Squadron Line and how their equity work lives in action. So, over to you.
All right. So thank you very much, again, for inviting us to be a part of this evening's meeting. You know, again, I think we have much to be proud of, what's going on here at Squadron Line. I think this year has been an extremely challenging year for our students and our families and our faculty, and we are just so proud of how everyone has just really risen to that, to the occasion, and meeting students' needs, and keeping that the focus in order to move forward, to have a productive school year, and keeping that whole child in mind when doing so, and making sure that certainly we are achieving high academic standards, but also making sure that we're providing the emotional, social support for our students and our families. And we couldn't do all that great work without your support. So, you know, it's truly a village in order to raise a child, and you're an important part of that, so thank you for all your support to be able to support us in the work that we're doing. So what we wanted to do is just share a little bit about our equity in action, and as you know, the district worked really hard to develop a vision of a graduate. And when you take a look at some of the things that we want our students to be able to do, global citizenship is really important and has stood out, and that's an area of focus that all of our elementary schools have been paying attention to. And that certainly is the driving force of all of the decisions at the schools and at the Board of Ed, and was a major contributor in coming up with our guiding principles of what we were going to be working on this year. And so one of the things that we wanted to be able to showcase and highlight was, again, the access and equity portion of the standards that we were taking a look at this year. The work really began for us two years ago, and we've had quite a few exciting journeys and stops on our timeframe and our highlights of what we've been able to do. You know, certainly, taking a look at our equity statement has been a very powerful experience for our faculty and staff, taking a look at what is our mission, what are our guiding beliefs, and what are our action steps in taking. So really using that equity statement as the grounding and the framework for our work. We've also been able to take a lot of look at videos and Youtubes, and being able to use that to enhance our education. I think some of the highlights and powerful videos that we've seen is, one was the danger of a single story, about how making sure that you really know a whole person and a person's whole story before making a judgment on them. And it's so quick and easy to take a look at somebody and make some judgments about them, and it can be very dangerous to do that, and really making sure that we take a time to get to know students and staff and family and our community members before we make decisions about them. I think another really powerful video that we saw was about systematic racism explained, and being able to say that, what's the difference between racism and bias and discrimination, and how individuals may have bias and might discriminate against one another, but racism is really systematic and systemic, and we have to be able to take a look at those practices and see what we're doing. And I think that was powerful, because it really was able for us to be able to put our guard down and say, okay, you might be an individual that doesn't have quite a lot of bias, although we all have bias, and it's something that we need to work on and recognize, and that's certainly been powerful work that we've done. But it's allowed us to be able to say, okay, I might not have much bias, but I'm a part of a system that might have some bias, and what can I do to make a change and really dive into that work? And so I think that, taking a look at that lens, has really helped us be able to let our guard down and dive into the work in a meaningful way. We've also spent some time reading some articles and books. I think one of the articles that we've read that was really helpful was about windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors, and Melanie Meehan also had done a presentation with that about it. And I think what was really powerful about that is that, you know, I think a lot of times, we hear about the importance of children being able to see themselves in the curriculum, in the books that we're reading, and we certainly know that that's important, and that's where that mirror comes in. But the windows and sliding glass doors are really important, especially in a community that might not necessarily have a lot of individuals in their classroom at a particular moment that have diverse backgrounds or colors of their skin, or where they're coming from. And so you need to have those windows and sliding glass doors into their lives. And so being really thoughtful about, when we're taking a look at our classroom libraries, what's the purpose behind some of the books that we're showcasing? If we're showcasing people who have made an important contribution to our society, we should make sure that we have all types of genders and all types of races in that. But it's also important, if we're just being able to show a moral of a story of perseverance, or everyday life, or this is a story about friendship, we should also make sure that the characters are diverse, so that this way, as a person who is white is learning about somebody who is Asian or somebody who's Black, you can see that, yes, they are just like us. They have the same joys, they have the same struggles, they have the same worries, and so it's really important to make sure that we have those mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors in our curriculum when we're working with students. And I think most powerfully that we're going to hear, too, is those professional development sessions. And we've been very fortunate to be able to have sessions led by our own in-house experts. Melanie Meehan, again, has been fantastic in being able to come and speak to us about, again, diversifying our libraries, and taking a look at, again, making sure that everybody can see themselves in our curriculum. We've also been able to have Diane Tobio, one of our Spanish teachers, come and speak with us. She had gone to a workshop on Be the Change, and so she came back and really talked to us about story webs, and how can you showcase about students and yourself, and also being able to make sure that teachers are able to know their students, kind of like, a lot of times, nouns, verbs, and how they see themselves in the classroom. So it's not just about baseball, but what do they love, and, you know, or that they're good in math, or they're good in reading, but what are their interests? And making sure that we can do that for all of our students. And then, Deacon Art Miller has really been able to be a part of our professional development this year. He's joined us on two occasions, and he has been able to really engage and excite people into the work. He just makes you feel okay about being human, and knowing that you have strengths, and knowing that we have weaknesses, and being able to engage and really talk about those conscious and unconscious biases that we have, and making it a safe space to explore what's going on in our world, and be self-reflective of even what's going on in our own self, so that we can make a positive proactive change. But you can't do that if you don't do some of that reflection about where your own biases may be. And so he's really done a great job of being able to make us feel comfortable to engage in some of those conversations.
I think some of the conversations are the most challenging professional development that we've done, because it's made teachers and faculty members really look deep inside themselves and figure out what their belief set is, what their biases are, and how they're going to work with that. So we have some feedback for you from a few faculty members on what the experiences have been like for them, and how it's impacted their instruction, as well as their own personal belief sets.
I wanted to share with you some insight into how the professional development program that we've gone through at Squadron Line has impacted me as a teacher. Taking a look at issues of equality, diversity, what it means to be Black and White, and to be of a multicultural society, and looking at differing perspectives has impacted me as an educator, and making me think critically, and to transfer that critical thinking over to my students. Even as 4th graders, we tackle social issues in book clubs, and we talk about current events. We delve deep into what it means to be a valuable member of society, and the professional development series that I've gone through here at Squadron Line has really helped me with that role.
Yeah.
In this case, the district itself, even beyond that, above that, and that's why something that resonated with me during the really, the Equity Statement of the District, a couple things that resonated with me, one was growth towards the achievement of equity is everyone's responsibility. I think it's very important that we understand that this is not just a handful of people trying to achieve this role, I still am, but it requires the village, per se, to make sure that these kids feel that they are, they need... that these kids feel that they are, that needs are being met regardless of their circumstances and where they come from.
I first and foremost just wanted to say how grateful I am. I feel so fortunate to work in a district that knew how important this work was and started leading the way of change in our last school year. So, thank you, and I hope that we encourage the conversation dialogue that we're having. As a faculty, one of the things that we learned last year and studied a little bit about was redlining. I'm sorry to say, I didn't even really knew that existed. I was, I am a product of the Connecticut Public Schools, and I'm finding that through our work as a professional faculty and through my own reading and studying outside of work hours, there is just so much we don't know. So, I just feel so grateful that we're able to fill in the gaps in our own learning so that we can help our students. One of the most powerful conversations I think we've had this year, it's been a little bit harder, having those tough conversations, not face-to-face, was when Art Miller joined us, and there was just something that stuck with me that he said in our last conversation. He talked about being on the right side of justice. And I just wrote that down, and I have it on a sticky note on my desk because I think it's so true. And the way that that conversation helped me in my teaching was, we have that conversation all the time as a whole class.
So, you can see that it's having a powerful impact on our faculty members, and it's interesting in one of the books that we're reading for Administrative Council, they talk about how teachers want a product out at the end of professional development and that it's okay to start with conversations and not walk away with something that you're using in the classroom. And so, these challenging conversations have really, whether or not they realize it, translated into their work in the classroom. So, we also want to share with you how the students are feeling this work in their classroom and how it's impacting them, whether it's talking about human rights, appreciating everybody's differences, that it's really having an impact through our social emotional learning is where a lot of it is taking place. And it's really exciting to see how the students are treating each other, welcoming each other, and learning about each other.
Human rights means that everyone, regardless of their skin color or race, that everyone has a right to be respected. Human rights belong to everyone, and it doesn't matter your religion, where you're from, how much money you have, or your skin color. We know that China is around, um, day three school, there was like how important people change the world, and we so, we talk about where our friend are from because all of our friends are from a different place. And we, we talk about books because maybe they have an important history around them. Because everybody's got to feel like they're treated equally, and they need to feel kindness and respect, and knowing that your language can hurt. Like, yeah, I'm gonna be about yourself. Because then, because if everybody was the same, they don't have the same name, they would come from the same place, it would be boring, absolutely boring. And then, when somebody would go, and they couldn't go anymore because there weren't any other country, because everyone was the same thing. Because they need to feel safe, and they need to have joy.
So, I think we couldn't say it any better. That came from, we had, we have to give them a shout out, Austin Linden and Abby Cerilli, who are sixth graders, Stefan Brown, who told me he dressed perfectly for all of you, and Mae Blenke and Theo Parker in first grade, and Ira Niyak.
Thank them all for participating.
So, as you heard in the student representative presentation, the elementary schools are taking part in a Black History Museum. So, this is an idea that was given to us by Melanie Meehan, and the idea is creating a museum of a variety of Black individuals who have contributed to society, not just in America, but nationally. And Sharon, to your point, we have people locally in this, and we have people internationally. So, it's exciting to see. So, what she gave us was a list of names and a curated list of books, storybooks for kids to learn about different individuals. And that was a jumping point for our teachers. They were able to pick an individual that they wanted to study with their class, and it has been so exciting to see this work being done. It hasn't been a one-day event. It's been an ongoing event for our teachers and our classes. And in the end, we've created a Padlet that is our museum, so it will go out to all of the school. And it's, the idea is that you get to use this ongoing, not just in the month of February. This is something that can be used throughout education at Squadron Line for years to come that we can continue to build on. So, we wanted to highlight what they're doing. So, you can see, if you don't know what a Padlet is, it's a really cool resource, and each class has a column with an individual that they're studying, and they can add to it videos, books, presentations. And then, they're also adding their reflections as a class of what they're doing. So, we wanted to highlight a few classes and what they're doing. So, I'm going to first share Darla Strand, our third-grade teacher, is doing Bob Marley with her class, and she also collaborated with our music teachers to do this, and it was really neat to see the two teachers work together. So, from the music end, they've talked about his influence in the music world, and they've listened to his music, studied the lyrics, and then they've also looked at him as a human rights activist. And an example of student reflections, we brought some with you, with us, to show you, was they took various Bob Marley quotes, and they drew their reflections on what they felt about it, and they're sharing that with the class as well. So, we have a few. This one is, "Get up, stand up for your rights, get up, stand up, don't give up the fight." And they talked about what they, what that meant for them. I will pass them around. This one was really sweet. This boy was talking about this one, says, "You never know how strong you are until being strong is your only choice." And he talked about his fear of flying and getting on the plane, and he drew all his fears. You can see a plane crash here and all the things that he had to do to get on the plane. So, it was really neat to see how this can relate to, the words of Bob Marley can relate to any student. So, it's been exciting to see the students dive into it.
I also had a chance to see Anna Stillman's classroom. They're studying Amanda Gorman, so it was neat for them to learn all about her, and it was just so moving. They showed Amanda's inaugural poem during the class, and I came in at the tail end of it. And who doesn't get the chills, right, when you hear her speak, and especially when she's talking about being the light? And when they turned the clock, the lights back on, you could see that all students were really taken in by what she had said. But was, what was really touching is that one student in particular was brought to tears by it. And I think it was not only the words that she said and the message that she delivered, but again, being to see somebody like him in an important role, and it just brought him to tears. And it was just like, oh, my gosh, this is exactly why we do it. So, when we ever, like, talking about kid stories of why we, you know, do it, like, it just brought me to tears to be able to see the impact that we can have and why this work is just so important. It was just so touching. I think the other one is, we had a sixth grader, Laura Rosado, does some hot air ballooning. And so, she was able to, she has connections to Bill Costin, who's an ex-NFL player who lives in Bloomfield, who was the first African-American to become a hot air balloon master. And so, there's a local film about him that just was produced by Sundance that was released. So, the students got to see that, but then they got to interview him in person and be able to ask him questions. So, like Jaclyn said, it's really a robust experience of past influential people, present influential people, and kids are being able to interact with history and current events in a way that they really haven't done before. That's been pretty powerful and amazing.
It was neat. I walked into a second-grade classroom yesterday, and it was actually a big part of their social emotional lesson, and they were studying their individual, and they were putting up physical traits versus the character traits. So, what made them successful from the inside versus what you see on the outside? And they had, you know, diagrams showing, and they were writing down adjectives, and it was really just amazing to see the conversations in a second-grade classroom that they were having to the conversations in a sixth-grade classroom.
So, that is our Padlet.
We should have moved your table, Meg.
And so, that just really was just, again, just wanted to thank you for bringing us tonight to be able to show you a little showcase of what we're doing. I think you get, I'm not sure if you get electronic copies of our slideshow, but we did include in that link a list of the resource, some of the resources that we've done. So, some of the TED Talks and some of those videos that we've watched and things of that nature are included in that, just because if you ever, it's just been fascinating and been such an education for all of us. So, we're pretty proud of the accomplishments that we have. You know, again, we couldn't do it without the fantastic faculty that we have. They're just so dedicated to really doing what's best for kids. Our families who bring their kids to school, invested in the learning process, and again, thank you for all your support for allowing us to be able to do it.
Katie, could you send the link, that out to all of us so that we could mine our way through it? Does anybody have comments to share with Meg and Jaclyn?
I do. What better way to have ended up at Squadron Line this month, really? And thank you for sharing, and excuse this, but I'm really, really glad that we ended up here this month and continued the good work. You know, one of the things that I've shared with Sue, and she knows, is that we don't hear enough about what's happening in the schools. And the work is important, and it's important not just for us as the board to hear it, but it's important for the community to hear it. And we need to do this a little bit more so that those of us who don't have kids in the school could know that this is happening and that, you know, the kids are embracing it, you know, because change, that's how change happens. And, and like I said, this just couldn't have happened at a better time for us to end up here tonight. So.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Yep.
And kudos to the little ones.
Yeah.
Big hug.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I just, I just want to thank you. The work you're doing is great, and getting this highlight, as we said, is just, it's something we've all been craving, is to kind of hear this, this work that's happening in the different schools. And, you know, for me being here, 14 years as a Squadron Line parent, and it's nice to be back in the building, but it's, it's always been near and dear to my heart, and I'm just so glad to see how it's thriving, and you guys are doing a great job. So, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see that it's just, I mean, honestly, we've always had Black History Month, and it's always been, I feel, it has not been, ever been this dynamic and this effervescent and this alive. And I just, I think you guys jumped on the board when we all started talking about this and making it better and trying to do it better, and I'm just so impressed with how fast you were able to bring it truly alive.
Yeah. And I think that goes back again to like, sometimes like, the resources that you invest in. This a lot came from Melanie Meehan, who's our writing resource teacher, who's, was able to set us up to be successful in it. And so, you know, certainly, we want to commend the teachers for what they're doing, but having those resources to be able to help teachers behind the scenes as they're trying to juggle all that is on their plate right now, you know, certainly, they will take things and run with it, but we don't always, without those resources, we wouldn't necessarily have what we have today. And it's also another great way of being able to show how technology and is being able to be used in an authentic way, to be able to present information, and kids are speaking in it and they're taking recordings of it, so it's not just like an add-on with technology. So, this is a great experience to bring all of the things that we value as a district into action. So, it's exciting.
Thank you very much. Thanks. That was awesome.
And the museum.
Yeah, I want to see the museum.
Yeah.
Yes.
What do you do, what are the plans to kind of keep this going so it's a full year in all kinds of groups and not just a February event? I mean, do you have like something planned for, you know, starting in September to kind of keep this always present?
Embedded in the curriculum. So, that is something that we want to take from this. I know that at least next month it will continue because now it was like each classroom just kind of focused on their column, and so that we'll be able to use the rest of the school year to start exploring the other columns, to be able to see, you know, what other classes have put together and highlighted. So, that's definitely a way that we'll be able to keep it going this year. And we will spend some time to be able to do some reflections with teachers, to be able to ask some of those questions of how do we make this an everyday experience? You know, I think that's something that Art Miller had taught us about, you know, the importance of Black History Month right now, but the goal should be just to have history. It shouldn't have to be any designated, but because we have not celebrated individuals who have made significant contributions, that's why the significance is here now. And so, you know, we want to make sure that that's how we just approach, when you're approaching something, contributions that people have made, we should have women and men and all different races and backgrounds so we don't have to have these types of separate celebrations.
And I think the exciting piece too is that it's been brought down to their level as far as every, every person has a children's book associated with them. So, it's relatable for them, so it makes it easier for all grade levels to explore each of the individuals, where some people, I think, seemed unattainable, let's say, at the kindergarten level. Now, it's been, you know, you take someone like Catherine from the, I just forgot the name of the movie, the mathematician. But it's not one that a kindergarten class would study, but they have the children's book about her and her desire to pursue her career and her dreams with NASA, and so it's exciting that we can bring it down to their level as well.
How did the classes choose who they wanted to highlight in their, in their museum column?
So, Melanie's book list divided some of it up by grade level as far as the appropriateness of the books. But then, so the teachers started kind of combing through that list, but they also had people that they were passionate about. So, it became, it was teacher-driven as far as selecting it for the students at this point, but they really dug into their passion. Like, I don't even know that Bob Marley was on the list, but Darla plays him every morning in her classroom, and she's like, that's who I want to do. And she took her passion and turned it into this. So, there's a lot of ways that teachers picked who their class studied.
And I think that's another way this project could grow in the future, is so instead of it being teacher-driven, then it can become student-driven. So, you know, I think that it's such a great, strong foundation that we can take it in a lot of different ways for a lot of years.
So, Todd, just a couple of comments. I think, you know, we've, we've always shared that equity is alive and well through many of our strategic goals. And when we talk about how do we continue, it's through work like this at the building level and professional development. And, you know, we, many of us share the, the adage, "When you know better, you do better." And so, I think that our efforts across the district and certainly highlighted this evening show how we're knowing better and therefore we'll be able to do better for kids every single day. So, it's very exciting, and we'll have a lot of resources to come back to and build from.
Terrific. Thank you both very much. It was such a nice peek into their world, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you to the teachers who also participated. I don't want to, I didn't want to just single out the kids, but to the teachers, because it's so nice to hear that this work is so meaningful to them as well and what they're taking away.
And thank you to Melanie.
Yes. Melanie and Diane.
She drove the bus and everyone got on.
She did.
Diane and Deacon Art, who is always there when we need him. We appreciate him every day.
All right. So, now, Mrs. Blenke, you have the floor, District Intervention.
District Intervention? Oh, what did I do there? Meg, do you know how I get out of that? With this clicker?
Escape.
I thought I just pressed the error.
So, tonight, just wanted to share an update for you around our K-12 interventions. I know that through our previous conversations, both at the workshop and thereafter, we were talking about kind of mid-pandemic, post-pandemic response. How do we build back our system of interventions based upon some adjustments that we had to make this year? And so, tonight, what I wanted to share with you are some current trends and challenges that we're seeing during this pandemic, give you a taste of some student performance data. Certainly, tonight is not about giving you a data presentation, but we did share that we had been collecting some data relative to student performance. How are kids doing right now? And what is our response now? And what is our response now, over the summer and in the future, as we rebuild those systems of intervention to support our students? So I will also share with you some next steps and some potential cost estimates. Again, this, this data is a snapshot in a moment in time, but I think it provides us with some really great information relative to our response. So some current trends and challenges, I know that the font is pretty teeny-tiny up there, but what we had to do certainly, we, we know that we had to make room. We needed to make explicit room for social-emotional learning and time for that, to respond to how students had been after being fully distanced from March until the end of last school year, coming back to in-person instruction. So we really made sure K-12 that there was a prioritization of our curriculum. Where did we have to go deeper versus wider and broader? So certainly, that was a main point of our first steps this school year. And because of that, we're recognizing that there are parts of our curriculum previously provided some direct instruction, that we said, not yet and not now, because again, we have to make room and prioritize. So we want to be cognizant of that. What units of study had we been previously teaching that we've decided that we weren't going to go in as deep or broad? And then what does that mean relative to grade-to-grade transition? Certainly, at the elementary level, we know that we've taken our interventionists, whether they be our math interventionists, coaches, reading interventionists, and they've returned to the classroom. And they've returned to the classroom so that we can concentrate on decreased class sizes, to put in place the mitigation strategies that we've been implementing during and through this pandemic. And we want to be very cognizant of, again, that rebuild of those interventions, but what also is happening in the classroom? So now that we've deepened and prioritized, how do we put the tools in the hands of teachers to be able to respond to what students are showing that they need? Some of those mitigation strategies of social distancing, of doing things differently, it has limited how close we can get to students in our, in our instruction. Some of our smart, small group facilitation, our small groups have gotten even smaller, right? And they're little kind of entries into a specific teaching point and then backing out. We want to be very cognizant of how students are receiving instruction, when we have to intervene. We also are keeping an eye on stamina, engagement of students, specifically those students who are participating in, in instruction through the distance learning format. We're looking at school attendance, are kids signing on, engaging with what frequency? And there were students, there are students, and I've shared this before with the board, that have issues around school avoidance. And does this pandemic exacerbate those issues? And that's also something that we're keeping a close eye on, as far as their social-emotional needs. Executive functioning, you know, now with this new platform of distance learning, of some of these screen and virtual opportunities, students might be taking some shortcuts. And those shortcuts may, not in all cases, but may translate into some skill deficiencies, right? We practice skills around organization and planning and the execution of tasks and what that looks like. So we're just cognizant and watching to make sure that that is not impacting our students in a negative way. And we do have some students presenting more academically at risk, and I'm going to share with you some of that data. But again, this is around collecting that information. I don't think any of us are extremely surprised by the fact that some students are more at risk. We just have to be thoughtful, even more thoughtful, about how we respond to that. Okay? So I am going to share with you some data. There, I've categorized it, elementary data, middle school data, and high school data. The elementary data and the middle school data is around what we call our STAR assessments. So STAR, just as a reminder, are computer-adapted assessments, meaning students take these assessments in math and different aspects of literacy, and then the computer adapts to students' response to give you that next level of challenge. And what STAR is able to do is really to give us some answers about where students are currently performing, and because of that, what might be their next steps instructionally, where they might need some more assistance and help in intervention, and helps us to plan around that what's next. We also know that there's a strong correlation between how students do on the STAR assessment and S-Back. So we use this as kind of a temperature reading throughout, but certainly wanted to highlight some of that information. Again, this is a kind of a snapshot in data. Most of our elementaries have administered a winter STAR assessment, and they'll be completing that this week, but it's enough to share with you what we're seeing right now. So this information, which I believe you might also have in your packets, but I'll, I'll walk through it. This is a comparison of the past three years. We're students, and typically, we give a STAR assessment in reading in the fall, and then in the winter, so around this time, and the same thing with math. And what this is showing is that from 2018 to 2019, you can see some, some pretty significant growth from fall to winter, between the year 2018-19, 1920. And here, we've seen some growth as well between fall and winter, but it's not as large as we have in the past. Now, these are different cohorts, so I do want to share that. You know, this is actually the 3-6 data as a composite, but they're, they're different cohorts and groups of kids. And it just points to the need that we have to pay attention to where our students are at, and what kind of regressions are we seeing? And again, what is our response? But it's a snapshot in time. For Henry James Memorial School, what I'm showing here is students, the percent of students who are at or above the benchmark of where we would expect them to be, in reading and in math. So these are grades seven and eight comparatively last year to this year. So if you kind of look at, you can do a small slice of cohort growth. So the columns on the left, which are indicative of 2020 for grades seven, so for example, reading, grade seven for 2020, 81.8% of the students were at or above benchmark in reading. This year, same cohort, 78.8. So we see a slight dip, but something that we want to keep our eye on. For math, last year's seventh graders at or above benchmark were 59.6%. This year, 56.5%. So certainly, there is some build of intensity and content from one year to next. But again, what this shows is that we have to keep our eye on these markers, determine which students are those that require some additional intervention, and respond. For high school, the STAR is not an assessment that is given across grade levels. So when we were looking at student performance data, it was those numbers of students who are academically at risk. So what I provided there in the first column is the grade and the number of students overall in that grade, which equates to the overall total of the student population at the high school of 1,278. And then I give you the breakdown of the numbers of students academically at risk, and that's defined as students who are academically at risk to have more than one D or F. And then the composite percentage on the right. So if you look at those numbers, on average, we're talking around 18%. And we want to share with you, based upon this data, how have we responded thus far? And how we're going to keep an eye on our students' needs and responses in the short term and in the long term? Before I go into what has been done to respond, just want to stop and pause to see if there's any questions so far.
I have a question. Back on the, the last slide on the high school, just curious, from a historical perspective, is that, is it typically 17? Do we, do we have any?
Neil, could you speak to the historical perspective?
That would be higher than it typically would be. Be more in the low teens, you know, 12, 13, you know? It's definitely higher.
I'm looking at the number, just by grade level, the juniors, who, it's that all-important junior year, and that's the highest group of kids at risk. So that, you know, that's a tough year, as is. It is.
Are those, are those numbers projected where they will finish, or where they're at now? Or?
Where they're at currently, this is quarter-two data.
Okay.
Quarter-two data.
All right. And quarter-two ended in January?
It did.
Okay.
And, and maybe you're going to touch on this in the future, but like, those chapters that you guys decided to not include because of timing and other things, is it something that, how will you address that? Like, is next year just going to be just a stressed-out year? I'm just, it almost gives me a little anxiety seeing that. Like, is it the kids, how will the kids manage that or grow from there?
You mean make up the work that they didn't get to do this year?
Make up the work, right. Will they graduate without those chapters ever being done?
Right. So I want to think more of standards of literacy or math that we've gone deep into or not. And that response from our teachers has really helped to prioritize, and even just yesterday, Jen, like, how do we make sense of this? I had our department supervisors and leaders come together in a leadership team, and we talked about how important it is going to be. We're actually devoting our meeting to April to discuss some of those gaps, and to be able to share that, so we can readjust our instruction accordingly next year. And as well, keep an eye on student performance and how they are performing on assessments overall, more curriculum-based, and again, how we respond moving forward. So we're having those conversations among department leaders, informed by teacher practice, to ascertain what does that look like in the fall, from grade level to grade level? And that's from elementary all the way through to high school.
In those transition years, do, do the teachers of like, the current sixth grade get to ever sit down in a room with the math teachers at Henry James?
So one of the vehicles in which those discussions will happen are through our vertical teams, where members of, that have a specific expertise in that content, will come together and discuss vertically what that looks like, with those smaller transitions and those larger transitions. So those spring meetings that are facilitated through my office will focus on this very topic by content.
So when are the parents brought into this?
What do you mean by that, Sharon?
When are the parents brought into the information that we've collected so far? Because like you said, this is a base, it's a baseline, right? It's kind of like a, like if I was in college, it's almost like a mid, midterm, right? It's a, it's a point in which I get to look at this and say, okay, this is where I am, and I have an opportunity to kind of readjust or change or, right?
Are you asking if the parents are informed of who's at risk?
Right. Because it's STAR data, and some parents don't even know that this data is available, right?
So this data is shared with parents through different communications, through teachers, through teams, and if students are displaying results that they are in need of intervention, then the parents, it's shared with them why and what that looks like. So at the middle school level in particular, and in the high school, you'll see that, that some of the interventions that we have to respond have continued to be, and we've enhanced some of those interventions, I'll get to that in a moment. In the elementary level, our classroom teachers are that first level of response to that, and that data and information is being shared. As a matter of fact, at the elementary level, we have our conferences that are coming up in just a couple of short weeks, and so teachers are having those conversations directly with family.
So now, I won't go too far, but so like, in this COVID situation, I mean, have we noticed, I mean, are parents attending conferences as frequently? I mean, have you been able to see that parents are attending conferences like they were?
We actually, that, now that they're virtually, I, I think our participation is even better.
Is much better?
Yeah. So I, I think that that just affords an opportunity for participation. I know we're seeing it for planning and placement team meetings. Now that they're virtual, like, there, there's just better attendance, because they're more accessible in that way.
Might be one thing that we might continue, Meg?
Maybe. We'll have to see. So what has been done to respond already? You know, I certainly shared prioritization of curriculum, and we've adjusted some assessment timelines. We've shared with teachers, put more in time and investment to the teach and less to the test, right? It's about how do we develop our opportunities to really get at these important elements of instruction? The other thing that we are in the midst of doing is having some pretty robust data team conversations. So teachers are looking at this data. I do have, if anyone is interested, I could certainly show you later, a template that we use to guide teachers to think through, what does this data mean? If students are demonstrating individually or thematically a skill or a need area, here's the next step into the teach. This is where you want to go next. This is the next foundational kind of entree forward to respond to some of that gap or regression. So those conversations and actions are happening at the teacher level. Also additionally, that SEL, social-emotional learning focus, is paramount here, right? We have to remember that we're still in a pandemic. We still don't know all of the ways in which our, our kids and our adults are going to be impacted. So we're celebrating the fact that we are in in-person learning, that continues to be so very important, and we have to give time to develop those relationships and those skills, because they're equally as important around being resilient through this pandemic. We're also, just as a reminder, students that were at risk, defined by needing more specialized services through special education, or who weren't doing as well and were demonstrating early regressions, you'll remember, we returned those students to in-person learning earlier, which has been great and exciting and provides access. And we've been able to, and I'll elaborate a little bit more, on some of these initial enhancements to our interventions to be able to respond to this information. So I wanted to show you specifically at Simsbury High School, five different ways that they've responded. The first two are specific, and we, we partner with our professionals at CREC through the Open Choice Program. One is the ESTEAM Program, which provides some parent training and behavior support, and it's relative to increasing participation and engagement for those students who might be struggling with that. We also have sidewalk chats, where we're literally going out to the sidewalk and having socially-distanced conversations around what are the next steps? Let's formulate a plan and enact that plan. Those have decreased a little bit because of the weather. However, that's still an option. We also have what's called the Remote Learning Center, which is structured for, support for students to participate in classes virtually, but they're actually in the building. So there's something about them kind of coming in, getting situated, having to report to a place to do their tasks. So there's something about them kind of coming in, getting situated, having to report to a place to do their tasks that's working for them. So we have that option. We also have something called Senior Seron, which is again, some more structured, like almost a structured study hall to complete assignments, prioritize needs, like we talked about that executive functioning. How do I sort through all of these tasks, prioritize them in a very different way than I'm used to? Senior Seron gets to those learning needs. And finally, our Distance Learning Academy. So this is distance only instruction for general education courses in core subjects, where we're finding some data where students might be struggling a bit more, and allows them to, okay, we've had a quarter or two that hasn't turned out so well. This is an opportunity for a fresh start. So those are some of the ways that the high school has already responded, adjusted and enhanced. But want to share with you across the district, kind of what we're thinking in the longer term future. So first for elementary, you may recall that we often offer, well, we have, not often, every summer, we offer learning academies that are focused in literacy, that are focused with math. Some come traditionally with a cost. We're going to propose that we use some of the grant funding to offer these academies to families at no cost so that students can receive specified group instruction for several weeks out of the summer if they so choose to do that at the elementary. We're also looking at our coaches, right? So Neil had shared, Matt had shared, a big part of our budget is the rebuilding of our intervention systems that have needed to be adjusted for this pandemic learning. So we're looking to our coaches to instruct more groups as well be, as be that resource to teachers and to do some direct instruction with our students that are struggling. Ms. Gonzalez, Betsy Gonzalez, our Director of Elementary Curriculum, has also proposed some additional math tutors in her budget that you've heard about to account for more sections that through the spring, we're still seeing some potential data trends of students that might need those interventions, so we want to be planful for those through some tutoring. And we want to continue our social emotional focus areas, really putting a finer point on our scope and sequence around social emotional skills. What do we want students to know and be able to do at the kindergarten level, third grade level, sixth grade level, and really articulate that more?
Sue, about the academies?
Yes.
Normally, there's a limited number of kids. Are we going to expand that to allow more access for more kids? Are the teachers going to maybe identify kids they think would benefit?
It's going to be a both, right? We're going to be taking a look at the, some of the hard data that I shared with you, some classroom recommendations from teachers, and we see what we have and make the offerings, knowing that we may have to provide more seats and options for students. And there may be some families that decide, thank you, but we're just going to kind of take a break as well, but know that that option is out there for them. So we'll respond based upon the recommendation levels and based upon who is interested in accessing those interventions.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. At the secondary, we're going to be taking a look at just summer intervention overall. So we don't want to prescribe that just yet, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to be flexible so that we can respond based upon what students need. So we'll see how the spring interventions go and be able to really individualize some of those interventions. Certainly at the middle school and high school, they're already thinking about different intervention responses. I spoke with Mr. Baker, the principal of Henry James, and really talking about how do we build up our tiered systems of intervention for math, for executive functioning? You know, is there a specific executive functioning class that we want all students to engage in? You know, have different interventions for students that might be struggling with some of those skills? We want to look at what the classroom-based interventions are. You know, again, we have some really good structures that we might be able to utilize, whether that's the connections period at the middle school or through the departments. And they're going to own kind of specific skills and go deep into teaching those skills directly. We want to make sure that skills are developed through a direct teach and not just assume that kids should have these skills on their own. And then finally, as well, continue those social emotional learning that focus those plans and how to embed those markers into the secondary curriculum in a natural way. And continue to say how and do how important that work is. So these are just some cost estimates. Again, these are proposed to be grant funded, whether it be the academies, the tutors, specific courses, the Distance Learning Academy. When we look at those current costs, we're estimating about $150,000. Again, we could utilize some of the ESSR funds, there might be some Title I monies, too, that we can use for these efforts. And then we might have to make some modifications at the secondary level based upon summer interventions and what we're seeing a more focused need on to respond to students. So I know that's a lot. You wanted to, to kind of get a state of the state with the interventions and just wanted to share with you some of our current thinking. And we'll certainly come back and share with you any adjustments as we see how students respond to what we have in place.
I just have one question, did I miss it? Did you compare the percentage of kids that are at risk this year to previous years? And do, in, in your, in, how many at-risk kids do we usually have using the summer school program compared to generally?
So I think it depends upon level. Tara, I think, you know, some of the star data, we're seeing not as many students regress and not the typical growth that we would see from fall to winter in cohorts. So that's a flag for us. For Henry James, I highlighted how we are seeing this time last year how students had performed.
I saw that.
We've seen some regression there. And Neil kind of shared that the, the percentage of students at risk academically at the high school is higher in percentage. So again, not information that we're surprised about, but information that we're certainly paying attention to, knowing that some of the previous kind of constructs relative to intervention may have to be changed and modified to meet the need accordingly.
So Tara, I would add at the high school that, so intervention changes a little bit. It's about, it's, it's, reporting it out about risks of Ds and Fs because it does become about credit completion and making sure you don't fall behind your, your credits that you need to graduate. And a lot of the intervention systems that we've built over the past decade with the math labs and the writing labs at those drop by centers, you can't access them in a pandemic. So that's why I think you're seeing a lot of the, the poor grades. They're harder to intervene during the school year. So I do think we'll see more kids in kind of traditional summer school remediation. We had gotten that number down very low in a typical year. So that summer school was very small in Simsberry in a typical year. It, I think it's going to be larger this year because you can't let kids fall behind their course-taking credit needs to stay in line to graduate.
And as always, I love seeing the study skills course.
Yeah.
I'm a firm believer in that, and I wish we did more of it.
Yeah.
I really believe in it, and I'm glad that we're putting it in somewhere.
Yeah.
So, so, so my question would be, you know, since I don't have kids in school, so how do, how does the, what does the process look like for kids to get engaged for summer school? And how do we know that they will?
So it's a lot of follow-up using our staff that will make those connections with families and parents. So first of all, it always starts off at the classroom level and the teacher level. We emphasize the communication and how important that is, and if, that's where we start. And as students have additional needs, then we might get additional individuals involved, school counselors, additional support staff, to make sure that we've communicated what the need is, how we would like to respond and engage with that student, and then that follow-through. And as always, if parents and family members have concerns, they're encouraged to give the school a call, access school counselors, access the teachers to find out how students are individually performing.
And Power School is still up and running.
Absolutely.
So parents have the ability to monitor how their kids are doing and be involved as mucher as, as they feel they need to be. Because again, we're always trying to get the kids to advocate for themselves as much as they can, but given the situation this year, everybody needs a hand.
I have a question about the previous slide.
Sure.
These are just the new, newer interventions that we want to put in place because of the pandemic and the learning. So, because there's nothing in the spring. So we, we typically have, we still have spring interventions. I mean, you, you showed us second quarter numbers. How do those improve by the end of the year? Like, I mean, do the interventions work? How do we know the interventions work? That's one thing I haven't seen in, in the numbers. And maybe that was in the cohort numbers that I just couldn't, couldn't follow. But, you know, where, where does that seventeen go at the end of fourth quarter?
Is that a lower number?
Yeah, I mean, are the, are the interventions working?
Sure. So I will share with you this, as far as, and that answer is different based upon, are we talking about the middle school, the high school, elementary? What do we have currently in place?
Is, is good enough?
Directionally, I will share with you, starting at the high school, based upon some of these interventions that I highlighted already in place, we've seen a decrease in students at risk.
Okay.
So we're, we're trending well there.
Okay.
In our elementary, again, most of the intervention has come to the classroom level. So that's why it's very important to make sure that we're engaging teachers with questions that they're asking themselves, asking each other around student performance data, and what's next as far as the teach. So we can see some improvements there. At the middle school, we still have some of our tiered systems of intervention in place, whether that be for reading, we have an academic support center. So some of those interventions, yes, they are being effective, and we know that there are potentially greater numbers of kids because of this pandemic that might be accessing those interventions than they would have been, you know, two years ago. So it's a confluence of all of those coming into play. We know our interventions work, and we also know that we might need some new structures to respond to this greater need. So the summer academies are the only thing up there that aren't new, but typically there is a cost to those academies where this summer we're saying, we're going to use these grant funds so that students can access that, and cost won't be a factor.
And I apologize if, if this is restating Sue's question, but with, with the academies, I would assume you'd see an increase in enrollment, right? If nothing else, because there would be no cost to the parent. Is, is there a, is there a limit there? Like, you know, do we envision having to hire potentially another teacher? Like, how, just walk me through how you see that kind of stuff unfolding, the enrollment. And again, and maybe as Sue was asking, is, is, I mean, it'd be a great problem to have, right?
Right.
You know, is there a cutoff at some point?
This addresses some assumed increase in staff.
Okay.
Based upon some of the, kind of the data and the numbers that we're trending and that we're seeing. So it shows some assumed cost. If we have to make some additional adjustments, certainly I think we can do that. You know, that specific line item down at the bottom, the summer interventions for the high school, it should also say some middle school there. I mean, we'll have to see because we don't want to presume too much, and we may need to think differently depending upon, to Todd's question, how are kids doing?
Yeah.
Are some of these spring interventions working? And we just want to make sure that we have that flexibility, Jeff. But we anticipate that we may have to respond to bolstered numbers because of the need.
I think my biggest response to this is I'm so impressed that you're able to define numbers at all. I mean, because you've got students who are regularly at need, you've got students who are just disengaged, who will respond quickly to any intervention just because they'll come, they'll, once they trigger it on, they'll, they'll come back. Their education will be more intensified. But I am just really impressed that you guys have a plan and that you've thought it all through. I can't, these numbers are really hard to pinpoint, I would imagine. They're just absolutely moving targets. And to think that you already in January, February, have things in place for these kids who have struggled this year when you couldn't even anticipate that. I mean, I'm just very unhappy that you guys are working this hard and you're, you're keeping an eye on every student so we don't lose anybody. I'm really very thankful for that.
You're welcome. I think the key is flexibility, right? Because interventions are as good as the need that they're trying to address, and we're trying to be as individualized as possible. Some students may not need math support, but they might need some executive functioning support or literacy or social emotional support. So the key is flexibility to be able to respond based upon data that we're seeing and trending at all levels.
This is amazing.
Jen had something.
Yes, two questions. One is, the last time we were talking about this, maybe the last meeting, somebody said that the S-SPACs were still going to happen, but that I think it was either our district or the state was going back to say, we'll do it, but don't tie it to something. Did we get a word from?
So we haven't heard whether the waiver is accepted. So we are anticipating that S-SPAC will still occur this spring. What the state did is it applied for a federal waiver to decouple the results of that with these accountability measures for district and district rankings. So it was a, a pretty robust proposal to decouple those accountability factors. We haven't got an official word, but the outlook is promising that that will happen.
That's being decided federally?
Yeah. Yes, it has to be a federal waiver.
Okay. He's going to decouple it.
And then the last thing was the, is there any way or, and particularly, maybe because I'm closer to it, but the elementary side, is there any way that we will survey the teachers or survey the kids or something? Like to say, is there some of that mental health stuff that they're focused on, those soft starts? I know we, we've said before, we have soft starts, but we truly have soft starts right now. And so is there any way to incorporate some of that, even though I know, it's like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, I know academically we're behind, but we also want to make sure we have that. If it's beneficial, like do the teachers believe it's beneficial or?
You mean to continue next fall?
Correct.
Yes. So we've gotten both some informal responses and some more formal responses. Neil and I actually just had a PDEC, which is our, kind of our professional growth evaluation committee that has multiple teacher voices on it, and we asked them for themes, and social emotional learning was one of them. At the building level, we're getting those assessments from teachers. They've also said that loud and clear, as had the kiddos, and gotten their feedback around the soft starts and how that's working and having some choice. So we are getting that feedback, and we are looking to how to incorporate this appropriately and again, provide the room while moving forward.
In some future, like, meeting, will we be able to like hear the results of those kinds of, of things? Or is that more like a curriculum level meeting?
The results of?
Of like, you know, how much of that social emotional stuff we are really going to utilize in the fall.
Sure, I can give you an update, kind of as those plans formalize more. You know, I had shared with you specifically at the elementary level, like what is our scope and sequence around skills and social emotional learning, and what does that look like? And I'm happy to give you an idea of what that's looking like as we think about reopening for the next school year.
Because we're going to get to open again.
I think for, for me, what I'd like I think for, for me, what I'd like to see in and along those lines is more of a holistic view of what did we, what changes were implemented due to the pandemic?
Yeah.
And what, what is it that's going to be retained to kind of help us get through the next year? Certainly, we need some extra supports, at least for the next year. God willing, now everybody's where they should be in person and good. So if we can kind of maybe have a, like, an assessment of what, like, what worked?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
There we go.
That's what I was asking.
I was reading your mind?
Yes, you are. Exactly.
What worked, what didn't, what are we keeping, what are we stopping, what are we changing?
Stuff change for the pandemic.
Happy to do that for you. Happy to do that.
And, and to get it across K-12.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay.
No time is going to be spent in our March PD, and I know, so either elementary schools haven't done it already, someone's going to be talking at upcoming faculty meetings or at the PD and doing exactly what you're talking about.
Great.
So we'll be able to help, you know, boost the information needed to facilitate some of our activities.
Because I would imagine you guys are certainly hearing that feedback about the soft starts and how that's helping your kiddos and?
Virtual meetings.
Yes.
Technology, technology.
Yeah. Yeah.
And with regards to social emotional learning, we gave a survey of getting the applicants and faculty kind of where they're at, and then we just did a media run of, you know, for students to kind of do a checkpoint of how they're doing, how they're feeling. And if we did do a separate survey of faculty about what do they like about social emotional learning, whether they want to move forward next year, so we can share that.
Yeah.
And that was the survey we still?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's sort of, I think, what we're all wanting to know is sort of how to move it forward.
Yep. Okay, anything else for Sue?
All right.
Great.
And with that, we are back to our sec, oh no, policy. Sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
That's okay.
I almost missed your.
After those two meaty presentations, this is going to be very brief. So we are on the pathway to approving four policies. One related to visitors, visitors to the building and the new visitor management system. One related to just a new org chart for the administrative level of the organization. And then the two meatier ones that have to do with revisions to Title IX policy that I spoke about at the last meeting. This is a four-step process. The policies first get really vetted by the four members of the Policy Committee with me. That happened in January. We do a, so that's step one. Step two is what's called the first reading with the board that we did at the last meeting. And then this is a second reading that gives us any chance to tweak them. Between first and second reading, you have an opportunity to see if you, contact me and see if you have any questions. As many times as I refreshed my iPad to see whether anybody had any, there weren't any. So this should now, this should now be ready to go for a vote. And step four is the vote, which will now happen at your next meeting. So.
So that would be the late March, the second March.
It'll, it'll have to be your next regular meeting that you would vote on.
March 23rd. It's right here for me.
But if there are any questions, this is the time task.
Okay, thank you.
Katie, do I need a motion here for executive session?
All right, so, so the board is going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session. But while we are still live streaming, I just want to say, our board will have its next Board of Ed meeting on Tuesday, March 23rd. We will be at Central School, continuing the roadshow, so we can get ourselves into each building. So we will be at Central School and get a highlight from them about some of their programming while we're there. And thank you very much to Meg and Jacqueline.
Should we know about our budget, numbers, budget meetings that people can participate in?
Yeah. Well, for.
Is there a town meeting?
For moving forward, there is no public hearings until April on the budget for the Board of Finance. But the fir, but please do watch for that first week of April. There will be a public hearing. In the meantime, the Board of Selectmen is working on their budget. And we will be having a Capitol discussion, robustly, I'm sure, around our projects over Zoom on Tuesday. Sorry? March?
Yeah, Capitol.
Tuesday, March 2nd, there will be a Capitol discussion on the Latimer Lane project, the bleachers and whatever else the Board of Selectmen would like to ask us. And that will be over Zoom. All of that said, Megan, Jacqueline, thank you for having us. It's been so fun to be in your building, and we are so happy to see the work you guys are doing every day. So we appreciate your hospitality.
Thank you. You're welcome anytime.
Thank you. You never know, I might come knocking on your door. And with that, I need a motion to move us into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We are moving to executive session. Thank you all very much.